Welcome to Megan Hughes, who's solicitor for this evening. Okay, land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate the land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Call to order. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Counselor Bob Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm in a conflict of one of the water and sewer snow removal contracts. I have a company that won one of the tenders.
That's 6.5. Thank you, sir. Any other conflicts?
No.
Okay. Approval of agenda. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor McKinnon. All in favor? Okay. Adoption of previous draft minutes or regular meeting, December 10th, 2024. Special meetings, December 12th, 13th, 2024, and January 8th, 2025. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether how important this is or not. Just notice that-
What page?
Uh, page 18.
18, okay.
Uh, it said that you left the meeting at 2:34. I did as well.
I left somewhere around the same time. I have Pat Meleven, the Guild. Is that the same page?
Uh, it's on the one when we had the, uh, presentations.
Yeah.
Seventeen, maybe it's seventeen.
Oh, seventeen. Okay, thank you.
Seventeen or eighteen. Under T3 transit, it said, uh, the mayor left prior engagement. I was there for the first part and had to leave as well, too.
That was the senior social, your worship, your majesty James, that day, remember?
That is correct. Uh, the, I and Counselor Ramsey had to go to, on court.
Yes, we did.
So that's why we left. But all the-
Stay at me. I, I, I left as well, too.
Okay, so you want that added?
Sure. I don't know how.
Duly noted. Thank you. So Counselors Ramsey, Beck, and Brown left the meeting. We left the building. Okay. Any, any other amendments? No? Okay. Counselor Ramsey, you want to move the adoption?
Yes, I do.
Moved by Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor Duran. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. It's going very well so far. Let's just keep this going. Business arise and fund the minutes. No business? Okay. Okay, we're going to the first report, planning and heritage. Deputy Mayor, Alana Yankoff. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the Heritage Board has not met since our last regular meeting of council. Design Review Board has not met. The Planning and Heritage Committee has not met. The Affordable Housing Committee met on December 17th. The minutes are in your package. Planning Board met on January the 7th. Um, copies of the minutes and the report are also in your package. Um, and so also in your package, you will see the year-to-date, um, permits that have been issued since December 2024. And just a couple of other highlights while I have the floor. Um, let's see. We, uh, we are heading, you'll see tonight in, in our resolutions, that we are heading, um, potentially to our, um, public meeting for the draft official plan. Um, that's providing council approves that resolution this evening. You'll also see that the second resolution in your package is really just a do-over, and it was just a clerical error. We had indicated, when we passed this resolution on the, um, on Park Street, um, we had indicated October 2025, but it was just to, it meant, it was meant to be October 2024. So tonight, when you see that resolution, it's really just making sure that our ducks in a row and i's are dotted, t's are crossed, um, in terms of the process. So you'll see that in there as well. Um, we're also embarking on the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, which, um, have started work with the consultants as early as this week, and we hope to have that, um, work done and completed for council by the fall of 2025. You'll also see that our, uh, public meeting for Park Street application from the provincial government is scheduled for January 30th, 7:00 PM at the Charlottetown Hotel. Um, there's also been, um, a new hire with a planning development, um, in another planner, and we have also gone out to look for another inspector. So things are looking up in the Planning and Heritage Department. And, um, I also wanted to just point out that in terms of construction value, um, in 2023, we had $156 million in construction. 2024, we had 252 million, which is a 62% increase. So yay Charlottetown. So, any questions? I'll do my best to offer, uh, answer them. Yep, thank you.
Good numbers to have. Okay. Do you want to read the first resolution there? Ms. Fraser, Susan, Sue Francha?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, your worship, is moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council approves the request to proceed to a public meeting to allow residents and interested persons to make representations on the new draft official plan for the city of Charlottetown per Section 11 of the Planning Act of PEI and commence the official plan adoption process.
Resolutions on the floor? Okay. Just one second. Okay, Counselor Twill?
Can you light him up, Tracy? Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report, Deputy Mayor, Alana. With regards to this resolution, is it my understanding that there's just one public meeting when it comes to the zoning and development bylaw? And with the one meeting, it's, it's basically, uh, that is the opportunity besides residents having the opportunity to file their concerns online with the city's planning department, but it's just the one meeting, if I understand it correctly? That's my first question.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you for your question, Counselor Twill. So, um, just to Quinton Tarantino with just a little bit, we have, um, gone through two public consultation periods over, um, a one-year period. We, we did a group of them around the community, and then we did them again. Um, so tonight, um, we're to the stage where we will be going to public hearing or public consultation. And if you look at the process which we have to follow, um, we, 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 we shall have one meeting, but if, if the, if, if there hasn't been enough time for folks and it becomes a busy meeting and we have, and we'd have to do it again, we can have another meeting. But normally, there's one meeting, but there's no, there's nothing to say we can't have a second meeting if we require another public meeting, if, if, if all of the public has not had the opportunity. And you can also go on, on the website, and you can, um, share your information that way as well. So I hope that answers your question. So, thank you.
Counselor Twill, second question?
Um, it, it does. Uh, I just wanted to bring to your attention, you know, years ago when we went through the process for public consultation, uh, we did break it down into neighborhoods and communities. Uh, we had, um, I guess you could say workshops where residents had the opportunity to come out and, uh, uh, you know, sit at different tables and offer their suggestions and recommendations. I, I just wanted to bring that forward as, uh, as a possibility, uh, 'cause, you know, uh, lots of times people, people in our city are busy with other commitments, and they're not, unable to get to that one particular meeting. And I know there is the opportunity to, to file their recommendations online with the department, but I just wanted to bring that for a comparison, is, is what we did, uh, a number of years ago. I, I thought the exercise was a good exercise, and I only bring that forward, uh, for your consideration, uh, because it was, there was more, there was more participation, especially when you went into different neighborhoods and communities and broke the city down into the, the different zones. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for that, Counselor Twill. And we have done that twice. We, we, we broke it down into the different communities. Um, and I'm trying to, from memory, we did it in-
East Royalty?
April of 2023, and then we did it again. Was it September or October? I don't have the exact dates, but I think it was September, October of 2024. And we went into, we did four meetings on each occasion, so we were in the different communities. We also engaged with stakeholders, um, developers, business people in the community, and the meetings with the consultants were just a revolving door for, for many months. So I, I do think we captured that community piece. And, uh, but like I say, we'll have this public meeting if, if council should approve it this evening. And from there, if we, if we still see that the community needs more input at another public meeting, then we'll have another public meeting.
Okay. Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm just wondering, Counselor Yankoff, one of my concerns, I guess, and we've talked about it in here different times, was the, uh, Irwin lots that the federal government wanted us for the housing accelerated fund to go from, uh, if it's an Irwin lot, that is an as of right to have built a four-unit on it. To me, with the one meeting and the amount of information that's here, it's like, it's like it gets buried and all the information. I think a lot of people would miss that. And I think that's going to be a focus that a lot of people are going to want to know, especially when you're in an established subdivision. So if you have a lot or there's two lots, all of a sudden it becomes as of right to build a unit, and people in the area don't even know. And I just wonder, how do we get that type of information disclosed to the residents, or make sure they know about it anyway?
Deputy Mayor?
Yep, thank you for that, Counselor Bernard. And, um, I do know that we're embarking on a, on a communication strategy and a communication plan that will not just involve social media, but it will be regular mainstream media. So the meet, the information is going to get out there, um, prior to a public meeting and during and after. But also, I would say that we need to remember that with the official plan, this is just the guiding document to which will help us then make the changes that we need to make to our zoning and development bylaw. And in the fall of 2025 is when we'll come in place whether or not council approves a four-unit as of right. So this official plan gives the guiding document for the changes to the zoning and development bylaw, but it's not, it's not a slam dunk. It is just, it is the document to say that as of right, as appropriate, could be considered, but even if, 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 if we make no changes to this draft official plan and council approves it, that still does not give, um, builders, developers, contractors, um, a carte blanche to go out, because it, the zoning and development bylaw has not even been embarked in any changes yet. So anything, anything even in this new official plan, until the zoning and development bylaw changes, nothing is as of right. It will still have to come back in, in through council. So I hope that helps, but even you just standing up today and discussing it publicly about the four-unit and the concerns of that, that already will help alert the public to say, okay, let's ask some more questions about this at our public meeting. If that's any help.
Second question there, Counselor Bernard?
Um, so I'm just wondering, and thank you for that. I'm just wondering, um, but when council passes the official plan, that doesn't, does that not trigger the zoning and development bylaw? Because we passed the official plan to say this is going to be what, what we're moving on. And I guess the other question I would have is, if you're in a subdivision, like, when every lot is, is, is as of right to build a four-unit, where does it end? Like, if there's an area where there's three lots together, for example, does that mean you can put up, you know, a 12-unit? I think there's some questions that need to come out. And they'll probably come out in, in some of the meetings, if this is brought up, so people can see it. But I would assume that when you pass the official plan, that triggers the zoning and development bylaw to change. And maybe I'm wrong.
Deputy Mayor?
And yes and no. You're, you're correct, Counselor Bernard, but because council is looking at this document as of right, as appropriate, that, that then trumps, and that then enables us to take our zoning and development bylaw and create a criteria around what does that mean. So in your zoning and development bylaw, as of right, as appropriate, could be anything, for example, from how big is your lot size? Do you have enough space for X amount of parking? Will you be building to fit into the community? Um, do you have enough green space? There could, that, that'll be a council decision. So there'll be, there'll, there'll be no situation that I can imagine that's just a, like a carte blanche there, clang, here you go. There's going to be a criteria around that, because communities, I mean, even, you'll see in the official plan now, the, the, um, the focus on the official plan is the corridors and the nodes and the places near the colleges and the universities. So we're still being very mindful of, of what Charlottetown is and what the communities are and the importance of the community. So I hope that's helpful, but I think there's still a lot of opportunity left for council and for the public to discuss and ensure that they're getting what they want, um, in the official plan as well as our zoning and development bylaw.
Counselor Duran? Nope. Counselor, you've spoken twice. I'm going to keep to that because we could be here all night, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, he spoke twice.
Thank you for the explanation. But we've discussed this a number of times.
Yeah.
And every time it comes up that is an as of right of four units to a lot, we always say, no, it's as appropriate. So anytime, you know, a single-family lot comes up and you apply for a four-unit, it would have to go back to the planning department, and they would have to determine, is it appropriate? So, so every time we bring this up, that there's a lot, um, as of right, that, that's false. We, we never agreed to that. Council has never agreed to that. We, we accepted the federal funding, uh, on the condition that as appropriate, so it goes back to the planning department. I just, every time we bring it up that is as of right, it gets people worried. And I think we have to stop that because it's false. It's as appropriate, not as of right. So I, I, I just hope that we can just stop that.
Yeah, just one second. Counselor McCabe?
And I think for clarity for me, when I think, and I'm with Bob on that, the zoning and development bylaw will help guide what is appropriate, but we're not to that stage yet. This is the official plan, which is the working document, the bigger, higher order. And on charlotetownhall.ca, anybody that is interested can go, I think it's posted there now, is it not, Deputy Mayor, where they can go and have a look at through-
charlotetown.ca, yes, it's there.
charlotetownhall.ca?
charlotetownhall.ca. What, what's, what's your point of order? Just, just tell us your point of order.
If the information's not right, it's usually a point of order.
So what are, are you saying his information's incorrect?
No, I'm not. I'm hoping it is, but we, I was told before, because you asked this question, I was told before that the, the appropriate-
Yeah, as appropriate.
As appropriate was if it's, if it's in a flood zone or whatever, then it wouldn't be allowed. Well, that's common sense, but that's, that's what I was told here before when we brought it up. So if it's going to be as appropriate, it's going to be reviewed, like the council just said.
Yeah.
I'm okay, but that's not the answer I got before.
Deputy, and if, if you wish to, you may want to, you'll go right first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Counselor Duran and Counselor Bernard are both correct. The zoning and, they, they're, the official plan does say as of right, as appropriate, but council and the consultants and the staff, we've not yet defined what is appropriate. So Counselor Duran is correct. We don't need to get all like, you know, nervous about it, because we have so many opportunities to define what is appropriate. And that's when the residents of Charlottetown come in. They're, we're going to want to know from them, what do they see as appropriate? How do we build this city correctly for the, for the, for the future? And so right now, as, as appropriate, we, it could be flood zone, it's definitely probably going to be flood zone, but we haven't, we haven't approved that yet. It could be parking, it could be green space. It, God, it could be anything. It could be, you know, if you don't eat bananas, you can't have it. Like, we don't know yet, because we haven't, we have not defined yet what we believe is as appropriate, because we're not at the zoning and development stage yet of what we're doing. Okay?
Counselor McClellan?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. So, so just from around that, and I, I'm, I'm assuming Counselor Yankoff has it right, and I look at planning, just it like, are we getting the, is, is what's, uh, Counselor Yankoff is sharing, uh, sharing with us, uh, same interpretation as-
Counselor McLeer, are you directing the question to?
Are you questioning what I've heard about it here?
No, are you?
No.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, I-
Okay. Do you want to answer the question? What's, your question is, is it true?
Yeah.
Go ahead there. Tell us the whole truth, not the truth.
Thank you, Counselor McLeer, and I know what you're getting at. You're trying to see, you know, what, you know, we're looking at the staff. I mean, they are the Jedis of, of what we do here, and we get our recommendations and stuff. But I can, I can tell you that what I've spoken is accurate, and if it's not, um, our manager and our director are here, and I don't see any lights on, so I, I'm thinking we're good to go. Yep.
Okay, Counselor McLeer, follow-up with truth and reason. Okay, go ahead.
And, and Counselor Yankoff, that certainly wasn't in question, your, uh, your understanding or integrity on it. It's just, um, just wondered if the staff had a different way of saying perhaps the same thing, and we're all on the same page. It's, it is, it is a contentious point, and just good, uh, good to know that, uh, everybody's clear, including council and staff.
Did you want there, Mr. Russ, the director of Integrate a Growth to, hold on there, just your line?
If he, if he wishes, he or Donna wished to share anything more-
Look, he pressed that button right from the start. Okay.
Um, I, 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 I think I pretty well covered it.
You covered everything.
And, but if there's anything else-
You want to wrap it up with a bow there, Mr. Russ?
As long as he doesn't confuse the matter anymore, because we've got it covered.
I would just further the chair's comments on this entire issue. Ultimately, if council passed the official plan, you know, tomorrow, anyone that wanted to proceed with four units as of right would have to apply, well, it wouldn't be as of right effectively, is what is being said here, and that's true. Someone would have to apply for a zoning bylaw amendment to, for council's consideration before that right is, um, allowed on that property. So the discussion around this is a little bit premature in that we just kicked off the zoning bylaw project, uh, today, as mentioned by the chair, and that document will undergo a lot of public engagement over this next year until we make a final decision. Council makes a final decision in fall of 2025.
And this is a comprehensive review overhaul since 1999. Question called? Question's called. Okay, now just one second. Let's use the little machine. Okay. Open the vote. Just press your button. All in. Good. Close. Nine, one. It's nine, one. Counselor Twill opposed. Just one second. Just one second. Okay. Do you want to read the next resolution? Deputy? Okay.
Planning and Heritage's second resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that City Council postpone a public consultation meeting, which was approved by council on October 10th, 2024, until late January 2025 regarding the amendment of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan in respect to the Comprehensive Development Area CDA Parcels and Permitted Uses of the Zoning and Development Bylaw to permit a community outreach center and an emergency transition shelter for the property located at 15 Park Street, PID number 365593. This postponement will allow sufficient opportunity for the public and stakeholders to prepare and be involved in comprehensive consultation process. And there's a footnote to that, Your Worship. It's noted that a prior resolution was passed for this request on December 10th, 2024, whereby an incorrect date of October 10th, 2025 concerning approval by council was stated.
Counsel Matar has pressed his.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just noting that the original resolution was moved by myself and Counselor Duran. This one is being moved, is that just for the purpose of the clerical?
Just in the name, that's, it's, the original resolution.
Resolution stands.
Okay.
Correct? Yeah. So your name is still in that resolution.
Great, thank you.
You and Counsel Duran.
That should be attached.
It is, thank you. Questions was called on just one second. Okay, please vote. Okay, just one second. Close. Ten, zero. Two resolutions? Correct? Okay. Okay, Counsel McKenna, did you have something to say? You're, you're, okay, go right ahead, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you.
A question for the Chair of Planning, Deputy Mayor Yankoff. Just a request, if you can put on your agenda and your next committee meeting regarding 18 Trainer Street. There's been several issues brought up, planning issues, driveways on the corner, does a berm need to be put in place? I'll bring up to Public Works later another, some more issues, but there's discussion there I think needs to be held. So if you can put that on your agenda, please. Thank you.
Consider it done.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Matar. Strategic Priorities, Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Strategic Priorities, Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee did not meet in the month of December. We will be meeting next week, so there are no resolutions for your consideration or report this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Counsel Matar, I'd like to make a request that I'd like in chronological order, the issues that former CAO was communicating and consulting with, with the other two levels of government. That's both the province and the feds and all relevant departments within the city's corporation, along with the mayor as well. So I'd like that information. I'd like to become more informed as to what issues and what initiatives, both the chief, former chief administrative officer and the mayor were working on. I'd like to have that information so I can become much more informed. I think it's important. I think it's imperative and it's indispensable to further inform decision making. Thank you.
Counsel Matar.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Twill. Sorry there, I was scrambling to get a piece of paper, but if I understood you correctly, you were looking for an update on any correspondence that city administration and the mayor have had with our intergovernmental partners? Is that what's the question?
Yeah.
And, and is there any particular area of interest or is it in all areas?
Wide open.
I want all departments from A to Z. I think it's important because, you know, I think we need to become much more informed as, as a council. And I'd like to know what, what the initiatives were, what the issues were, what the issues are, what's been resolved, what's outstanding, what's work in progress, all of those, all of those important processes and procedures that probably began under the chairmanship of Counselor Beck and now with you assuming that very important role as well. I think it's important that we, that all members of council has that information because there's a lot of, a lot of very important, a lot of relevant information that's out there, which I would even suggest that we're oblivious to. So it's, it's important to have that information because we're going to be making some very important decisions over the next couple of years and we need to be very well informed. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Twill. So I'll, we, we have our meeting next week and I'm noticing that Mr. Jenkins isn't here, but.
No, he, he's online.
Oh, sorry.
He's listing in, so he's probably.
So.
Are we going back two years, Counsel Matar? Is that what he's going back? Right back to 2022?
I'm not sure what his timeframe was, but we'll bring it to our committee meeting and we will discuss if there's possibility of getting some updates in regard to our discussions and interactions with our intergovernmental partners.
Both levels of government.
Yep. Open and closed meetings. Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you. And I think we just did get some correspondence from our acting CAO who indicated that we are going to start getting some operational updates through our directors and stuff starting to happen. And I think that will give us a real tool to be able to kind of stay informed and know what kind of things are happening with the different levels because that's where those will be vetted through. So for me, I'm excited to see that that initiative will start and I think that will be a good tool to keep us informed about all the things that are happening within the city. Thank you.
Okay. Protective and Emergency Services.
Okay, thank you. Our, the Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on December 12th. We met again on December 19th. This afternoon, we had a wonderful ceremony here in City Hall where there were six new constables sworn in. We've recognized three officers for special efforts and achievements within the department. They had four officers who were promoted in the department. And I'll have to say, it was a really proud moment to witness this and to see the families of these people come together and be recognized and celebrated for the great work that they do for our city. So I just want to say thank you very much to our department, to our two deputies and to our chief for all the great work. And they were very appreciative of all the support that they have received from us as mayor and council as we try to get on par with the rest of the provinces with where our operations should be. So really proud moment to be part of that this afternoon. We do have two resolutions for consideration and if there's any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them. And I have the deputy chief here that can help me.
Counsel McCabe, did you want to put those just in the public record? I have those names right here. Do you mind?
No, I don't mind at all. If you like to read them, Your Worship, I, I can read them. It's, I didn't have the names in front of me and I didn't want to recognize individuals and risk missing, missing. Okay.
And thanks to the Deputy Jennifer for your organization. Jennifer Karen, it was well done and great audience and.
Yeah, somewhere.
Very proud to.
Okay. So we have, oh, sorry, I tend to do that. Our, our new constables, Ryan Ormond, Corey Burry, Kyle Arsno, Jacob Snare, Kennedy Ogden, and Ryan Beaton. We've had Brian Donley and Robert Larder promoted to sergeant. Jenna Vesey and Michael Shalineir promoted to corporal. And the chief's commendation awards for Tim Kaiser for his work and effort in the water rescue. Terry Polly for his work with all the IT within the city on our e-watch cameras and, and how he's brought us up to high standards in that. And Pete Stay for his work with our drug enforcement agency. So those are who we were able to recognize this afternoon in a great ceremony. Thank you for those names.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Twill.
Before I get in a couple of questions that I have, I want to, just speaking with Crossing Guard Jackie Arsno today, that is Crossing Guard for Parkdale who crosses the children at Confederation Street and St. Peter's Road. Jackie's indicated to me that he's celebrating his 50th anniversary, 50th anniversary of Crossing Guard here, here with the former municipality, Parkdale, and the amalgamated city, the city of Charlestown. So Counsel McCabe, I think we should recognize, officially recognize and have a ceremony for, for Mr. Arsno. I think he's, there's no one more dedicated, more determined, determined and as diligent as, as Jackie is. He takes a great deal of pride of work. He's a great communication student, great communication skills with, with the students and the parents feel very comfortable with his ability to keep the students, keep the students safe. So I'd like to bring that to your attention. A couple of things. Congratulations to the police officers that were sworn and recognized here today. But something along that same line, when following the, the media, the broadcast media and talking about police officers leaving municipal police forces and being recruited by the RCMP, I wonder if you'd be able to get this information at a later date for me because you probably don't have it now. I'd like to do a comparative analysis in terms of the compensation package. For example, with the RCMP are paying police officers as compared to what, you know, say the city police are paying. Like to look at the pension plans and, and what other opportunities that might exist with the RCMP that don't exist with, with, with the Charlestown Police Department. Like to have that information because I'd like to delve into that just a little more because, you know, over the last year and a half, a lot, a number of police officers have left and have been, have joined the RCMP. So I think that's a cause for concern. I think collectively, we as a council need to look at why, why, you know, these incentives are there or, or what the situation is. I'd, I'd like to delve into that if you could, please. And then from a fire, fire perspective, all we have to do is look at south of the border, Southern California, with the fires that are taking place in Los Angeles. A number of fire departments in Canada, firefighters are, are going down to, to help out, you know, the, the residents that are losing their homes, losing everything that they worked for. And we have one of the best fire departments in North America and I was wondering if the opportunity was there for our firefighters to be able to participate and go down and help out if, if they choose to do so. I don't know if those discussions have taken place, but firefighters right across Canada are going down to, going down to California to help out the firefighters there. And I was wondering, because, you know, how great our fire department is, whether some of our firefighters were afforded the same opportunity. I don't expect an answer here tonight, but just wondering if that could be examined as well. Thank you.
Did you want to take that under advisement and come back or what if you wish, you wish to?
I mean, those, the, the bans for policing and stuff for the municipality would all be on our HR, that, that's all there. There would be a different, a definite difference. One's federal, one's municipal, and help me if I'm, I'm wrong, but we can try and do the jurisdictional, whatever scan to see what they are. I know that we're hoping to be able to come forward with some different initiatives and stuff. I'll try and get that information and as far as the fire, I'll ask the question for sure.
Okay. Do you wish to go with the first resolution? Oh, sorry, I didn't, just put it on there now, sir. Go ahead.
Is there a, it's about the report?
Yeah, no, just stand up, yeah.
So thank you for your report, Counsel McCabe. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the vacant guideline and thank you for following up on that request from the last meeting. So if we look at some of these buildings, we have an 18-month order once the hazardous compliance order is issued. So if I look at the first property, it was, it was issued on September 8th. So by my calculation, that would put, it was, that was September 8th, 2023. So that would put it at March 8th, 2025 as to when that order is over, correct? And if I look at the fourth property, it was issued, or sorry, the one down below on Chestnut Street, it was issued on September 18th, 2023, which would put it at March 18th, 2025. So I guess my question is, my understanding is, is that during the, once the hazardous compliance order was issued, there's 18 months to either renovate or demolish. And what happens if after March 8th or March 18th in those particular properties? What happens if nothing is done by then? So if someone could take me through what that process looks like? Because I know that these particular properties are on the 18-month clock and, so if, if you could answer that for me.
I see Kent is here and, and I don't know, I'm going to try to remember from memory exactly how the conversation went, but I just want to make sure that if I have, if I'm in proper in what I'm saying, that you're giving the correct information. So the unsightly and dangerous bylaw, when I ask those same questions, because I think we were on the same path trying to understand, it, it's not as cut and dry as like they're going to renovate it or they're going to tear it down. So they explained that as long as the building's safe and secure, there could be things in place. They might be waiting for someone to come in and do contracting. They might be waiting for a contractor to come in and demolish. So there's different things that happen within that. It's not just 18 months and it's going to be magically done. But as long as the building is safe, secure, and there's no possible risk. Kent, am I clear on that? Are you able to kind of jump in and help or Bob from the meeting? I'm sorry.
This is Chair. Yes, during the 18 months, sorry, if the building, usually with the fire inspectors and the bylaw officer are working with the owners of the building and there's some sort of revolution, resolution within the 18 months or at the 18 months, and sometimes as we've seen, it's gone over a bit, but the owners have done something to mitigate the issue, obtained a building permit to repair the property or a demolition permit. That's what we're looking for. And if something has gone too far with it, we will go through councils, through the bylaw and have the building demolished in that, in that way.
Okay. Do you want to follow up?
Yeah.
Yeah, just press your button there.
Yep. Okay, so just so I'm, I'm not entirely clear, I'm hearing that if they look for a building permit to, to renovate during that time or they look for a demolition permit during that 18-month period, but if nothing happens on March 8th or March 18th, what happens then? If they haven't sought a building permit to renovate, if they haven't sought a demolition permit to demolish, what happens then? That's my question. So we've, the hazardous compliance, the building has already been determined that it's, something has to happen, it either has to be repaired. That's why the hazardous compliance order was issued after several months, years of working with the property owner to try and bring it up to standard. So the hazardous compliance order is issued saying that we haven't seen sufficient change. We are now at a point where we have to put this building on the clock, for lack of a better word. So what happens if no action is taking, taken during that 18-month period and we get to March 8th or March 18th? What, what happens then? I understand about the, all the application piece, but what happens if the inaction that has been existent for a long time, nothing has happened during that 18-month period?
Counsel McCabe.
What I think, from what I understand, Counsel Beck, is that the city at that time can go in and they can do the work, take the building down, bill the property owner for the work that would be done. I'm sure they try at all costs to work with the property owner to avoid having to go in and do that so that we're not being so invasive. And again, I think that these are really good questions coming up now as we're moving into updating our bylaw because I think that's where we can be a little more clear in, in these situations on what the actual process would be and what's involved in, in it at that time. And I know that that is a priority for us. We've identified that and it will be coming to our committee to start updating that bylaw. So these are great questions, but I think basically the city has the right at that time to go in and take the property down if there's been no action. Maybe if I'm not right, am I? down if there's been no action. Maybe if I'm not right, am I right? I'm right? Okay. So that's what, we do have that right at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much, there, Counsel McCabe. Okay. You got another, you got some resolutions?
Protective and Emergency Services Committee, Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor Bob Duron, that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of same at the owner's expense, in accordance with the terms of the City of Charlestown Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw, with respect to the following property, 31 Kirkwood Drive, PID number 370841, compliance order served on the owner, October 9th, 2024. Pictures taken, satisfactory action to resolve issue not taken.
Thank you, Sue. Counsel Twill.
Sometimes when we look at resolutions and we're issuing a work order and a resolution to be passed, I'm not so sure we have a true understanding of all the information and the complexities that are involved with a particular property owner. I don't want to get into specifics, but I think, I think we need to, as part of, as a part of our curriculum in terms of examining properties that have fallen in disrepair, I think there, there needs to be other, other options, other methodologies that can be put in place to work with property owners through no fault of their own. Really need assistance. And I know that we're a very caring community, very compassionate community. And again, I will not go into specifics, but I would like to see our city, our personnel, see what, what other, what other options are there to work with property owners. It's not always black and white. It's not always cut and dried. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah. I just keep asking, why don't we bring in that summary offense ticketing so we don't have to come through this place and hold up these issues? I know you're new to it. Do you want to, Counsel McCabe, bring us up to speed, or what?
We talked about summary offense ticketing through planning, so now it's back with police?
Yeah, it's bouncing all over the place.
Okay. And I agree with Counsel Twill, and I think that's why it's not so cut and dry. And I think that that's where our bylaw officer is, phenomenal bylaw officer, who is really wanting to work alongside people in different situations who may be in a difficult situation. But then again, we have these rules in place. So if we have rules in place, then this is where we get into the push-pull, which is why I'm excited to look at our bylaw and the processes that go with it. I didn't even realize that was back with police, so we'll have to-
It's back and forth. It's, it's just-
We'll have to talk-
It's one of the 10 bylaws-
I'll add it into the email. Thank you.
Yes, and with reference to our bylaw enforcement officer, he's the best. He's one of the best employees in the city of Charlestown and has been ever since he's been hired by the Charlestown Police Department. I just wanted to bring that perspective to the table because sometimes there's a lot of other matters and other complexities that need to be taken into consideration. I know our bylaw enforcement officer goes above and beyond the call of duty, but there's sensitive issues that are involved in some of these cases. And I'll leave it at that.
Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I'm not, Kent, Todd, Elizabeth, they're all doing great work, and they are compassionate, and they are understanding, and they are patient, and they do go to try and find, to work with all the property owners. That's been demonstrated time and time again. There comes a point where all that either bears fruit or does not bear fruit. And sometimes we get to the point where we just can't pick any more apples off the tree. There's nothing, there's nothing coming there. And so we have to invoke the rules. And I'm fully aware that Kent and all the bylaw officers and everyone are doing their job and are being as compassionate, being as understanding as they can. But our bylaws, we have to be, at some point in time, we have to invoke them or remove them, one or the other. But I don't think anyone's looking to remove them. So let's work with the rules that we have and make sure that those are being enforced.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel McHart and I just took a quick look at the, at the bylaw refresh and what we're working on. And summary offense ticketing isn't even one of the top 10. We can't find it anywhere.
So is it under the sight of the premises by law?
No, no, it's its own. It's its own, it's its own summary offense. We, anyways, I just wanted to say that I can't find that under the top 10 that we're working on and should be, but-
Yeah, we've been talking about it now since 2019.
Yep.
Okay. Question called? Question's called? Okay, just one second. Please vote. Thank you. All chips down? Okay, close. Okay, 9-1, Counsel Twill opposed. Okay. Counsel Twill opposed, okay. Do you have another one there, Sue? Thank you.
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor Bob Duron, that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of same at the owner's expense, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw at the following properties, and that pictures were taken of the noted properties without satisfactory, without satisfactory action taken to resolve the issue by the respective property owner. 175 Euston Street, PID number 360107, warning posted on December 13th, 2024. 53 Westridge Crescent, PID number 794685, warning posted on December 11th, 2024.
Question's called. Okay, just let me do this. Okay, please vote. As luck trace. Okay, all chips are on. Okay, 10-0. Counsel McCabe, thank you for your report. And I did miss mentioning that I would like to recognize Mayor Heather McKenna and her CAO Stephanie Most from the community of North Rustica. Is that correct? The date's back to 1790. Counsel Twill, that's an Acadian community, too. En communauté française, acézé. Okay, next report is Parks, Recreation and Leisure, Counsel Twill, Ward Four.
Yeah, it's worth the price of admission, Counsel Ramsey. It's worth the price of admission. No, 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 it's here 365 days a year.
Campbell's Amusements.
I want to bring counsel update the, your Parks and Recreation and Leasers Committee did not have the opportunity to meet. We are meeting tomorrow night. We're looking at the Capitol, Capitol projects, examine recommendations from the senior administration in Parks, and we're also going to hear a presentation from the privateers football community. Sounds pretty exciting and should be a very informative meeting. Just some highlights for, for council's, council's consideration. Founder's Hall Green Space Outdoor Rink is open for recreational skating daily, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as of January 3rd, 2025. As a reminder, all participants are required to wear CSA-approved helmets. Hockey sticks are not permitted at this location. There are some people down there playing some hockey, I've noticed. And I don't believe you're allowed to use helmets that, used for bicycles. You have to use hockey helmets. I won't say who does that. Staff are working on the construction of the other outdoor rinks that we expect to have, some of them open later in the week, pending suitable weather conditions. The Elmer McFagin Memorial Recreation Complex, the Gordy Griffin Multi-Sports Facility, West Royalty Center Multi-Purpose Facility, the Mulberry Park Multi-Sports Facility, and the Winslow Lions Club Multi-Sports Facility. I want to emphasize the multi-sports facilities. They, these aren't just outdoor rinks. These are multi-purpose facilities that can be utilized all year round. And that's why they're so advantageous to the neighborhoods and communities. And that's why I'm a strong proponent of having these facilities throughout the city of Charlestown and the different neighborhoods and communities. I just wanted to draw that to your attention. The surface of these facilities can accommodate a number of sports. I think that's, that's so important and so valuable. Want to take this opportunity to inform council and the public. There will be an official grand opening event for the New Simmons Sports Center on Friday, January 31st, at 3:00 PM, during the Spud Hockey Tournament. The Spud Hockey Tournament, if you want to look at it from a nostalgia perspective, Claude and Mary Vye played an indispensable role in the introduction of the Spud Tournament. And I know they'd be very proud, very proud here today to, to see the new sports facility and the legacy, the legacy that they left behind. I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
I would add, I would add, Ernie Manning, he was also part of that group for the first Spud Tournament. Deputy Mayor Yankov.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counsel Twill, for your report. I'm just wondering if you're able to add, I guess it might be too late to add it to your agenda for tomorrow, but when you referenced the, the rink down by Founder's Hall, which is an amazing recreation piece to have in our city, last year, we had a lot of conversation around the chiller and the noise that it was sitting right on the street, right when you walk in to receive a coffee. And we had a lot of conversation around staff looking at alternative locations or options and how we can reduce the noise. And I'm just wondering if that can go back to your committee or if you have any updates on it. I don't expect any updates now as it wasn't in the minutes or on, on the agenda. But if we could just get a little bit of update on that, because I'm still getting, as Counsel for the area, concerns and complaints, although everyone loves the rink and, you know, you don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, but it is, the, the chiller is noisy and it's right there, right in a residential area and right in an area where people are enjoying the historic vibe of the receiver coffee. So, thank you, Counsel Twill.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you were correct. We had a lot of conversations last year. You were, you were very accurate in your assessment. This will be discussed at, at a future Parks and Recreation meeting, and I'd like to personally invite you to that meeting so that you can participate as the elected representative for, for Ward One. Obviously, we need to take a number of factors into consideration. You know, do we keep it at this location? Do we move the chiller to another location? Can we have a bigger rice surface? There's many, there's many possibilities and many, many options. But you are correct. I want to apologize that we didn't, didn't have that information beforehand, should have had it beforehand. So I take responsibility for that. So at a future meeting, I will invite you and, and we can have those discussions.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel MacLair.
So just to, just to finish up-
Oh, you got another, some more information?
No, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to follow up?
No, keep going, keep going.
Okay, just to follow up, I want to take this opportunity as well to congratulate David Tucker Flanagan, who has just been retained as coach for the Valley Wildcats in Berwick, which is down in the Kentville-Wolffell area, junior A hockey team. David has become the coach, and I know David personally, I know his family personally, and I think he'll do a fantastic job with these, these young men and make them into a very cohesive hockey unit. And I'll certainly be looking forward to the results. We're fortunate that we have two Charletonians that are now coaching in that league. Mr. McWigan, who's coaching the Western Capitals, and now David Flanagan, who's coaching the Valley Wildcats, Berwick, in the Berwick community. And I wish, I want to wish him all the best. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm supporting Summerside Capitals. Counsel MacLair.
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your report. Just maybe a comment and a question. Great, sounds like a great date, timing for the grand, grand opening of Simmons, the introduction of the Spud on the 31st of January. Looking forward to that. Just wondered, we talked about Stu McFagin and, and some kind of dedication within, within, within the facility. Just wondered if you, if you could give us an update on that, please.
Your question, Counsel MacLair. Well, as you know, the speed skating community, in particular, Beryl McMillan came for-
Can skate. Not, not figure skating.
Figure skating.
No, she's can skate.
Okay.
So you can skate.
Right. Okay. So anyway, nonetheless, Beryl played an indispensable role, wanting to form a partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department. They commanded and sat down and offered, I think it might have been 65, sorry, 75,000. The city matched that as well. And we dedicated a room on, on the second story of the facility, dedicated the Stu McFagin room. It's, it's a boardroom where community groups can host meetings, have executive meetings and board meetings and other meetings that are, that are, you know, that are open and available to some of the user groups at, at the New Simmons Arena. It's just right off the walking track in the north end of the facility. It's a nice room, and I think you'll be pleased with, with the results.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Twill. That's good. Another point? Okay, another recognition? Okay, go ahead. No, floor is open.
Yeah. One of the initiatives that we've been working on here over the last year or so, last couple of years, is the acquisition of the PEI Hospitals property on Brighton Road. I want the council to know that it's one of the things I'm going to pursue very enthusiastically here in, in the weeks and the, and the months ahead. I think it's time that the City of Charlestown acquire that property and annex that to the beautiful Victoria Park and make that part of the, part of the legacy of what Victoria Park is. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. That, that's one of the things I'm going to be pursuing and pursuing in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, no, it was a few years ago that you and I met with the Minister of Transportation, Infrastructure and Energy at the time, Steve Myers. We thought the land was coming our way, but it went south. And I know our manager, Frank, Frank Quinn, has been reaching out. I've been reaching out through Frank, so yeah, any help is always welcomed. Okay, that's it for the, good. We can move on to water and wastewater utility. Counsel Bob Duron.
The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on December 12th. We have two resolutions for your consideration. We do have our minutes posted. If anybody has any questions on the minutes, I'll try to answer them as best as I can. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Counsel Duron. As you know, I've been asking over, over, over the last year, year and a half, about the finalization of the, of the contract with, with the fiber-optic service provider. Just wondering where we're at. Can you give me a status report as to when that contract will be signed by the city and, and the fiber-optic company that put in place that infrastructure?
Counsel Duron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for asking the question. We bring it up every month at our meeting, and we stress about how we want to get this finalized. You know, we, we've asked this probably the last six months, every, every month. And our management is working with the contractor, and it seems to be a give and take where legalities come into play. It's a business decision. Nothing is black and white. It's very, very gray of future considerations, where we're going, who's going to own what. The mayor has brought- The mayor has brought it up monthly. We didn't meet this month. We met in December, but this week I've asked our manager to reach out once again to the contractor, to get him at the table, to make sure we're moving forward in a timely manner. I know the council is frustrated, as we are, but this is business. It's going to be a great completion when it is completed. You know, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a cost-saving measure for the city. Hopefully, we can get this tied up soon. And I say this every month for the last six months or more, so I'm just asking again. Next month, if we don't have it completed, ask me again, because I asked the manager and our director to look at this, to get it completed, so we can put this down. Thank you.
Thank you. And those meetings, Councilor Duran, are open to all councillors, correct?
Very correct. Everyone's welcome to come.
Thank you.
You know, we'll give you some time to speak, ask a question. Feel free to come at any time.
Okay, we got a couple of resolutions, Councilor Twill, Councilor Dooley Sue?
Yes, I do.
Do you want to read the first one? Please?
Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Bob Duran, seconded by Councilor John MacLair, that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of annual sewer main maintenance and accepts the bid submitted by Island Hydro-Vac Services in the amount of $40,750 plus all applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C.A.O. are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called? Let me just go right here. Please vote. Good. 10-0. Want to read the next one? Please? Yep. So, just to note, Councilor Duran is in conflict and is leaving the meeting.
Water and Sewer Utilities Resolution Number Two, Your Worship, moved by Councilor Terry Bernard, seconded by Councilor John MacLair. Resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of snow clearing of water and sewer utility properties, fire hydrants and stations, and accepts the bid submitted as follows. Hydrants and lift stations, hourly rate plus applicable taxes. Section One, Dickson Snow Removal, 110. Section Two, Dixon Snow Removal, 108. Section Three, McKinnon's Trucking, 108. Section Four, Dickson Snow Removal, 108. Section Five, McKay's Backhoe, 92. Section Six, Dickson Snow Removal, 108. Station per visit rate plus applicable taxes. Brackley Dickson Snow Removal, 170. Sherwood Booster, Dickson Snow Removal, 100. Miltonvale Wellfield, Dickson Snow Removal, 300. Miltonvale Booster, Dickson Snow Removal, 300. Union, Dickson Snow Removal, 300. Suffolk, Dickson Snow Removal, 500. Treatment Plant Landmark Construction, 350. Treatment Plant Salt Option Landmark Construction, 135. And that the mayor and C.A.O. are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councilor McKinnon?
Thank you, Your Worship. Last month, we approved snow removal for Public Works building. We're doing the same thing this month for water and sewer buildings. So, I'd like to look at why we can't use our own staff, our own equipment, and save money for next year or in future years and have our own staff doing this removal instead of going up to tender at extra costs.
Okay, so the chair's not here. On the committee is Councilor Maturt and Councilor MacLair, correct? So, did you, do you want to just take that under advisement, Councilor Maturt?
Thank you.
Any feedback there?
Thank you, Councilor McKinnon. I guess just stepping in for Councilor Duran, we can certainly look at that as, I know that was brought up, I think, by Councilor McAvitt or one of our last meetings when we talked about Public Works, sorry to call you that. But no, it's certainly something that I think the city should be looking at probably as a whole, so probably not necessarily in individual departments, looking at it from our perspective as just Public Works or through water utilities. So, maybe we'll defer that back to the C.A.O. to work with the management team about what the future looks like for our own snow removal and clearing.
Yeah, good idea, good. Good, Councilor McKinnon? Good? Okay, question?
Question?
Okay, 9-0. I just want to put Councilor Duran in conflict. Okay, that's it. Okay, just get Councilor Duran. And our next report is Councilor Trevor McKinnon, correct? Environment and Sustainability.
Thank you, Your Worship. Environment and Sustainability Committee met on December 19th, 2024. Minutes are in your package. There's three resolutions for your consideration and one anticipated resolution that may come out of closed session later on. Just a couple of comments. For ridership, in 2024, we had 1,505,812 riders, which is up 190,000 from 2023, 14%. So, we continue to increase ridership in the city. And another note, staff have met with provincial counterparts and are working with neighboring municipalities to initiate a Capital Region Active Transportation Working Group. Manager Jessica is here, so I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go right to resolutions and then if there are questions? Okay.
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Councilor Norman Beck. Resolved that the council rescind a portion of the previously approved detached resolution dated February 7th, 2021, that endorsed the city of Charlottetown to apply for partial cost of the energy performance contract with Honeywell through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, low-interest loan.
You don't need the resolution from before, red again, do you? You don't need the resolution from before, red again, do you?
No, no. Question called?
Question called.
Okay, question's called, great. Okay. Okay, open for voting. Looks like a long one. Okay, good to go. 10-0, okay, do you want to read the next one?
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Councilor Norman Beck. That council, resolved that council provide this updated resolution for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, energy performance contract with Honeywell to abide by the borrowing bylaw to noting the following parameters for this loan. Number one, the amount proposed to be borrowed will be $1,614,000. Number two, that the city of Charlottetown confirms that this borrowing will not cause the city to exceed its debt limit. Number three, the purpose of the loan is to cover the energy efficiency work done on City Hall, the Kent Street Fire Hall, and the West Royalty Community Center as per the energy performance contract. Number four, the proposed term of the loan is 240 months. Number five, the estimated rate of interest of the loan will be the greater of A, a Government of Canada benchmark bond yield, plus an FCM spread of minus 1.08%, and B, FCM minimum interest rate of 2.66%. Number six, the city of Charlottetown will repay all obligations under the borrowing arrangement through operational budgets which are supported by other financing arrangements, including operational and long-term financing facility which exist with our financial institutions. Number seven, the city of Charlottetown agrees to repay all obligations under the borrowing arrangement with no additional specific security provided, and the city of Charlottetown will use property tax revenue and operational savings to repay the capital and interest owing, and that mayor and C.A.O. are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, that's done.
Question called?
Question's called. Councilor Beck is nodding his head, question's called. Councilor Maturt, do you have a question?
Just a quick-
Okay, well, we'll let you go with the question.
I'm assuming that, and I just want to clarify, the 240 months, the term of the loan, the interest rate stays the same, or is there a review every five years?
Councilor McKinnon?
Thank you, Councilor Maturt, for your question. I'm not sure the answer to that, so I refer that to-
Refer to the manager? Okay, go ahead there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe the interest rate stays the same, but I would confirm and get back to you with Nick, the project manager.
Well, the number five says the estimated rate of interest of the loan will be greater of the Government of Canada benchmark at minus 0.108? And interest rate of 2.6? If you can get an interest rate of 2.66, good for you. 240 months. Okay. What do we want to do? Leave it until we get that information? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, the wording is directly from FCM, and it says for the loan, it doesn't say for a certain number of years of the loan, it says the entire loan. So, the way I read, this is language directly from our borrowing bylaw and FCM that we needed to include in a resolution, and it's either minus 1.08% of the Government of Canada interest rate, or the greater of that, or 2.66%. So, it'll be one or the other for the terms of the loan, is the way I interpreted it.
I get you now. So, whatever the rate is at the time, it's just, like, 1% year rate would come off the minimum interest rate for the Government of Canada, so that's the question, I guess. If it's 2.66, is that for the 20 years? Or would they review it? Because if the Bank of Canada rate was to go up to, say, 6%, then it would be 4.92. But there's nothing in here when they would review that. So, we assume that this is for 20 years?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to just hold it until we clarify that? Is that what you want to do?
Rarely do you see a 20-year loan, 2.6%.
Well, what's the switch loan at? They're at 10 years, aren't they?
Zero.
Zero, at 10? Yeah, okay. Councilor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just asking the question number eight, the property tax revenue and operational savings to repay the capital and interest owing. Was this something that when we got locked into this, or we looked at it, that there was going to be a savings to do the energy audit on it, and instead of paying, let's just, you know, whatever money we pay out in heating and costs, this was going to save us this money? So, the money that we're going to save will be able to put towards the loan, so it's not going to cost as much as what this says. Is that correct in saying?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, so through the FCM project, the energy performance contract, there are guaranteed savings to the city for the work done in the buildings, and so Honeywell is the contractor working on the work, and the city has guaranteed savings that whether the work they done meets that minimum or not, there is guaranteed savings that goes to the city for repaying the loan.
Questions called?
Questions called.
Questions called, okay. Okay, please cast your ballot. All votes in? Okay, Sue, you want to go with the next one?
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Councilor Norman Beck. We are resolved that council approves withdrawing from an FCM loan top-up request for switch Charlottetown, and where council will direct staff to continue searching for other means of helping Charlottetown residents in completing home energy efficiency upgrades, and that mayor and C.A.O. are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Open for votes. Always open for votes there, Councilor Maturt. Okay. Close. 9-1. We don't have, Councilor MacLair, you didn't vote? A yea or nay?
It was worth it.
Oh, a yea or nay?
Yes.
Okay, 10-0. Blame that on the technology. Okay. So, that's it, Councilor McKinnon? Okay. Public Works, Councilor Kevin Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship. We did, the Public Works Committee did not meet. Our last meeting was on December 4th. We didn't meet since then. I believe we're meeting next week. The draft minutes from December 12th are already in your package. I don't believe they were there the last time, and we have no resolutions. But any questions, we'll certainly put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilor McKinnon?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Chair, probably works, just a little request that you put on your agenda for your next meeting, if you could bring up. And it's regarding, again, 18 Trainor Street. There's construction going on up there. Public Works is aware of it, but whether we need to look at our bylaws or something there, there's a lot of mess on the roads. It's making us dangerous. When it freezes, it's slippery. People don't want to walk on the street. So, if you could have it looked at at your next meeting, please.
Most certainly, our acting manager, Paul Johnson, will certainly be taking note on that, but I believe we're meeting, is it next week, Paul?
Correct, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, yes. Okay, thank you. We will.
Okay, go ahead. Who's next? Councilor Twill?
Wanted to make a recommendation for city council to have a meeting with the business community and the residents down on Victoria Row. You know, I keep hearing and brought to my attention a number of news articles on social media regarding the functionality of city council communications. I know that one of our directors went out and embarked upon a process where we, a third-party engineering firm off Island. I think we need to bring those findings to the business community, to the residents in the community. We need to enhance our communications, I would suggest, and I believe it's time that we sit down collectively, mayor, all members of city council, our director, to have those discussions, because, you know, it's no secret, we're being criticized that we're not communicating, and, you know, the aspersions are out there, council doesn't care, we're, I don't know what adjective you want to put on it, but I really believe the time has come now for city council to meet with the business community and the residents down in Victoria Row. Sean Murphy's leading the charges there, you know, he's been very vocal, very vocal, and, you know, it's, like, it's time. It's time for us to sit down collectively with the business community and the residents. Let's enhance the communications, let's have a better understanding, let's see, you know, the plan that we've put in place is meeting with their approval, and if it's not, what can we do to improvise and to at least open up the discussions and see what can be further explored. see what can be further explored? So, Deputy Mayor, Atlanta, I know is in your war, and I know we've had that discussion on a number of occasions, but we just can't sit on the sidelines any longer. We need to have those discussions.
Thank you for that, Counselor Twill. I know Director McEwen has a really good grasp of that file, so perhaps we can, without putting him on the spot this evening, we will, he's here, he hears us loud and clear, and perhaps maybe we'll receive an email from him in the coming days on next steps, on how we might be able to bring that request to a reality.
Counselor Twill, that's your second time, right? It is your second time. So, do you want to take it now? Or do you want to listen more to the debate?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, I think we need to have that, you know, that collaboration sooner rather than later. I mean, it's been going on now for, you know, I don't know how long, over a year, maybe even longer, but we are being hammered on social media. And we, as elected officials, need to speak directly to our partners down in Victoria Row. They've made a considerable investment. There's a lot of concern. And I know that the steps and measures that have taken place is to make the workplace a safe zone, and I understand and appreciate all that. But we need to sit down along with our director and, you know, particularly Sean Murphy. Sean Murphy has been very critical, very critical, of what's taking place here at City Hall, and a lack of information. And let's open up the doors and have that discussion.
Okay. Mr. McEwen, did we not designate Mr. McEwen? I know, the spokesperson. No, I know, I know. So, he's the spokesperson. And so, it goes through Mr. McEwen, because I was going to talk about it, and someone said, "No, no, you can't, that's Mr. McEwen." Counselor McLeir.
No, the point was just made that, yeah, I thought this was kind of dealt with, but I understood personally was that it was being directed going forward through Mr. McEwen, it's not a city project. Anyway, I'm still in agreement with what that advice is, unless there's something different, council feels something different.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, I think that we still want to stay the track with some things that aren't on our agenda, that we don't spend a lot of time in these meetings discussing them. They're not in the minutes, it's nowhere. The message, I think, is clear, Counselor Twill, is that this is an operational issue. It's nothing that's ever come to our council. It's nothing, unless we want to go back and look at our street closure bylaw and make changes to that. Director McEwen is involved with the day-to-day. That was pointed out clearly on social media, even by Sean Murphy, who did recognize that this is not anything that we have any control over decision-making. So, eight minutes, talked about something that isn't on our agenda.
We all talked about it, three of us talked about it. So, we brought it to the floors. The project is not our project, and Mr. McEwen is the point person. Thank you very much, Mr. McEwen, for your service. Okay, time, no, time to move on. Okay, next one. Finance Audit Tendering Administration Counselor John McLeir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee met January 14th, 2025. Would have been the first, I guess, first formal meeting of our new finance manager, Lane Pino, who's with us this evening, in the event we have questions for him. So, as I said, the finance committee met January 14th, 2025. Had information in your package, along with the rest of the information. It's one resolution for your consideration. And I'll do my best with Lane, and I believe the CFO, Dan Jenkins, I believe is online, if I understand, to deal with any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McLeir, thank you kindly. Good, looks good. Okay, thank you, sir. Oh, one resolution? Please read it.
Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Be it resolved that council approve the budget transfers as follows. Environment and Sustainability Department transfer of $65,000 within the Environment and Sustainability Budget as per the attached documentation. Public Works Department transfer of $57,600 within the Public Works Budget as per the attached documentation. Water and Sewer Utility transfer of $500,892 within the Water and Sewer Utility Budget as per the attached documentation. And that this transfer represents no overall increase to the fiscal year 2024-25 operating and capital budgets.
Okay. Counselor Trump?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counselor McLeir, for your report. Can you explain the number three item there, the water and sewer, for that amount of money? Where, it just says capital expenditures. Could you explain that, please?
Counselor McLeir.
Thank you, Counselor Trump. I'll defer that to our finance manager, Lane Pino.
Mr. Pino. Great to see you here, sir.
Thank you. Through to the chair. So, the transfer information comes from the Water and Sewer Department. I can ask them to speak specifically on any specific projects. The transfer is based on their review of year-to-date expenditures, identifying where they are on certain capital projects. And as a result, where they would see that there's funds available that can be reallocated to other capital projects within their department, this form represents that.
Counselor Trump, could I just ask, did this go through your, oh, could you, okay, could you please address that?
Well, that's, you know, that's why I was asking the question. You know, where's the transfer? And thanks for your explanation. So, it's just different capital projects, is that correct? So, they just see, okay, if we're doing a street and we see that there's capital left over, we'll just change that to something else? You know, it's a savings, no increase in budgets or anything like that? Nothing like that? Sure. Yeah, we didn't meet, I did talk to the manager. He said it was something like this, but he didn't explain it to me, so I wasn't sure what it was. So, thank you for the explanation.
So, Mr. Pino, could I just ask, these transfers are going through now. Have any invoices gone through for these transfers yet? Or do we have to pass it first and then the invoices go out? We have three of them here, like, for example, Transit Operations Contract to clean up the snow. I've noticed some of the snow is being cleaned up. So, is that being?
Your Worship, through the, to the, through the chair. So, these transfers would be based on actual expenditures year-to-date. So, we would ask that the departments review their year-to-date expenditures and what the anticipated expenditure is going to be to the end of the year. The expectation is that if they identify that there's going to be a pressure within a specific budget line, that they come to finance to do the budget reallocation to ensure that the appropriate funding is there before the expense is incurred.
So, the work could have started already?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Questions called? Okay, just one sec. Okay, and it's open. Good. Close. Nine zero. Counselor Tard, you didn't vote? Counselor Tard, you didn't vote? Yea or nay? Just tell us now. Nay? Nay or yea? Oh, thumbs up? Yea. Okay, do we have another one? Or is that it? Okay. We will move on to economic tourism, cultural development and cultural development. Counselor Terry Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, our committee did not meet December, but I do have some information. There's always seems to be things going on within that department. So, Worship, I had the opportunity to meet with Minister Zach Bell, who is responsible for Fisheries, Tourism, Sport and Culture with the province. The meeting was to discuss the areas the city and the province could work together to attract more signature events to our province and city, and also to discuss, Your Worship, a fair hosting fee cost structure. So, it seems a lot of times when we get these large events, there's a hosting fee, and we seem to be paying the same as the province. But we're not getting the 10% sales that the province gets. We're getting the overtime costs and the policing costs and so on, so. He seemed open to discussing a new funding arrangement for the hosting fees, so. January, February, Your Worship, are traditionally slow months for revenue generating for the business community in most cities. But I'm pleased to let everyone know that we've just completed the George Trainer Hockey Classic, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. Last weekend was the Charlottetown Ring Act Tournament. So, Your Worship, that was two tournaments that we have people that book hotels and eat at restaurants and so on. So, moving ahead, we have the Spud AAA Minor Hockey Tournament. It's probably the best tournament this side of Montreal. So, there's usually a lot of teams that come to this. So, that will fill up the hotels for sure. The Sweetheart Female Hockey Tournament still to come. The Confederation Center, or the Confederation City Classic Basketball Tournament, and the Island Gymnastics Academy PEI Classic are all scheduled before mid-February. These tournaments draw a high number of visitors to Charlottetown, booking hotel rooms, spending money in our stores and in our restaurants. It just so happens that, so these tournaments are all going to go between now and February, mid-February, February 15th. The DCI Winterdine, excuse me, featuring curated menus from more than 20 downtown restaurants, returns January 20th to February 9th, when these tournaments are scheduled. So, it looks like a win-win for everybody. But it does show the importance, Your Worship, of having events and tours and tournaments and making start working on music concerts coming into our city. That makes quite a difference, quite an impact. I'm also pleased, Your Worship, to let you know that through our Arts Advisory Board, with the toolists from Doug Dumey, who is our culture coordinator, they come up with four artists that were recently selected through an open call for a public art project involving vinyl wraps on traffic control boxes at intersections across the city. Installation of these original artworks is anticipated to take place in late spring, pending planning approvals. Three of the four artworks will be installed outside the downtown core, increasing access to public art in several city neighborhoods. So, the four locations that it depicts so far, Your Worship, is, excuse me, Exhibition Drive and Kensington Road, Kent Street, Great George Street, right by the Italian restaurant, Usher Street and Wayma Street, which is Kent's corner, which would be in front of the Petro Canada, and St. Peters Road, Belvedere Avenue, which is near the discounters. So, it's great news, because I think everybody gets tired of looking at those electrical boxes, and they have those earth vinyl wrap, that we've seen them in other communities, and they look beautiful. So, Your Worship, that's it. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Counselor Twill.
First thing I'd like to do is recognize the outstanding work Cheryl Nicholson has done here in the last, you know, last, you know, year, last couple of years, but particularly New Year's Eve, Christmas Parade. I think she's taken on a tremendous amount of responsibility and does tremendous work. And I'd like to officially recognize Cheryl, so if you please take that back to that committee. I mean, she's a phenomenal worker, and she does the city proud every time. I do want to bring to your attention that we've all, you know, heard about the bus tour down at the United States Supreme here and members of the business community, particularly here in the City of Charlottetown. I, you know, I certainly wish them well in their endeavor. I hope there's success. That comes out of those discussions, negotiations. But I do believe the City of Charlottetown should have played an indispensable role as well. I'm disappointed that, you know, our manager of economic development tourism or the mayor was not invited to participate in that venture. I do think that we should be playing a role, a very important role in those discussions and those deliberations. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And, you know, we still have a lot of members of our business community that should have played a key role. For example, we have the Port Authority, we have the Airport Authority, and other major businesses here in the City of Charlottetown. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I do wish them all the success. I'm hoping for positive results. But I do believe we, the City of Charlottetown, should have been represented.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the City of Summerside did the same thing, too. It was a provincial, provincial call. I don't know, do you know, Counselor Bernard, who were the 22, 20 business people went? I'm sure that some from Charlottetown would have been part of that caravan, would they not?
Yes, actually, there was. There was quite a few from Charlottetown, Your Worship. I think there was a broad spectrum. It was government people, industry people, that all went down the bus. I think there was at least 20 that went.
So, it's not in the package? It's not, was that in your minutes?
No.
Oh, okay. So, could we try to find out who went on the bus trip?
I can find out, but that's a provincial initiative.
True. Do you have any resolutions?
I do not have any resolutions, Your Worship, but I did want to bring up again, I know we talked about it here before, I don't know if any work's been done on it, but now's the time to do it during the winter, because we've run into the issue of parking downtown. And DCI has brought it up, the Hamburg Hotels brought it up, the Confederation Center has brought up, there's an issue, and we need to get a handle on, you know, it seems when people apply for a patio, it's just automatically approved. I think we have to put a number on the amount of parking spots that the city is going to allow for patios. Plus, we have construction going on. I mean, there's a number of spots that have been missed for a few years in front of the federal building on Kent Street. So, I know I brought it before, and I don't know if anybody took charge of it, but it'd be nice for the city to come up with a certain amount of parking spots that the city can afford to give out in patios. Plus, taking into account that you have construction. So, depending how much construction and how many parking lots you're losing, because right this past summer, there was a lot of complaints, but people had no place to park to do business downtown. You come downtown, you try and find a place to park, but there was no place to park. And if we continue that right down that road, it's a slippery slope. So, it'd be nice to get a little bit organized and say, here's how many spots we're allowing for patios.
Okay.
And taking into consideration how much we're losing in different construction projects. So, I hope, I'm not sure what department would be responsible for that, but I'm sure Sue will figure that out, so, thank you.
Just coincidentally, I was talking to Melanie Bailey, that's looking at the 10 top bylaws that we want to address. One of them is, according to Melanie, that the deputy mayor has been asking for it over the last year, couple of years, that patio bylaw is going to be reviewed.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. Along with the procurement bylaw. Counselor McKinnon?
Now's the time to do it, though, before.
Yes.
Before spring. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and that was my question is what priority was patio bylaw looked at? Because I know myself, when you go downtown with the patio, the parking spots are on angles, they're building their patio straight out. So, they're taking three parking spots, but they're actually taking five, because they're not building them up. So, you can't park in an adjacent parking spot along the patio. So, I think we need to have a bylaw in place and have the enforcement enforce what's being constructed, so, thank you.
Do you know, right, Melanie? Okay. Human Resources? Oh, Counselor Mc, oh, look, Counselor Beck. All right. Jumped up. Hop up, Normie. Yeah, I did. Feeling good, Kev. So, the Human Resources Committee met on January 7th. We have no resolutions for your consideration. I do want to just reiterate what I sent out in the email last, yesterday, about our first meeting with the recruitment company for the new CAO. I think I speak for all committee members when I say that it was really positive. I think we have, we've established right off the bat a really good working relationship, I think, with KBRS. As I mentioned to you before, previously, they were highly rated based on the work that they've done with other jurisdictions. And I think they're going to be a great partner in finding.
in finding the best candidate that we can for our new CAO. And we'll have Sue here for a while to keep us, keep the rudder on the ship. And, but we will be embarking down that process and the timelines will be kind of moving along, just as you, as I indicated to you, the appointments will be forthcoming for you to have the initial consultation. We've finalized our consultation, external consultation, and we'll continue to update as we move along and keep everyone in the loop. But the initial indicators are all good. And I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Counselor Ron, Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Beck, for your report there. And thank you for referring to the email that you sent out yesterday. The only question I have is, it says the committee will look at all the applications along with the company, and you'll get down to two. In my previous dealings with, going with the CAO, you know, one time we were given two, it didn't work out so well. You know, then it was three. So I'm just thinking, like, when you, your committee, the two he is or three he is with the mayor, you sit there and it's your opinion of how you can get the applications down to two people. And then the council comes in and we have to pick, you know, we only have two choices. This is a council decision. I think a lot of people on the council have different perspectives other than, say, you and, you know, who's on your committee. So I'm asking not just to have a pick of two, but say a pick of three or a pick of five. So the council can sit there and we can interview them. I mean, it's only going to take 15 minutes to interview one after you guys do the initial interviews and you get it whittled down to, you know, three or five people. But I think it's a council decision and I think, you know, having just two people that we pick, you know, kind of defeats the purpose of a council decision. So I'm asking if maybe you could consider that or anybody else has any questions, you know, maybe bring it up too. If not, then we'll just forget it and go back to the two.
No, 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 Counselor Beck.
Thank you for that, Counselor Ron. And just as I, I think it was a minimum of two. We're not coming back here with one. I think the idea, if we reflect back to the last time, we had three presentations, right? So it's good to have options. I know Counselor Bernard indicated the same thing. And I would concur with you. I think if we can get three, four to come in, I think that would be our goal, is to try and get as much, you know, we don't want to kind of pigeonhole things, but we have to go through the process. We do have to narrow down, we do have to whittle down, but it's a valid point. And I think as we go forward, the good part about KBRS is, and that we've learned earlier on, is that they'll do what we want. And, you know, so if there's feedback that, like that, or if there's any other ideas, feel, you know, feel free to exchange. And if there's anything, we will, as we move down the process, I think we'll finalize those sort of finer parts. But duly noted, and I think it would be our wish to have more than two as well, too. When we talked yesterday, it was a minimum of two. We're not going to come back here with one, I guess is what we were trying to say.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate as well, Counselor Bob Duron, I think you hit the nail right in the head. I know you were saying there's options. Just from the last go-around, I personally would like to see five potential candidates come in, make a presentation to all members of the city council. So we would have that option to look at five different candidates and what attributes that they bring to the table. You know, each one of these potential candidates has their own strengths and weaknesses and different skill sets that they bring to the table. And I'd like to explore and examine those. So, you know, we have a chief administrative officer that's truly going to understand what our expectations are, what the results are. Certainly, one of the things I'm looking for in the new chief administrative officer is a true understanding, a true understanding of the, what it's like to be an elected representative at this level here in the city of Charlestown and how we communicate with our residents and the expectations on behalf of our constituents. We are a democracy. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, there's no government closer to the people than we are at the municipal level. I felt that over the last couple of years, we, the, that whole spectrum seemed to change and changed dramatically. I want to go back to that appreciation for what our role and responsibilities have. And that's got to start at the top of the new chief administrative officer. You know, I can't emphasize that enough. We've got to get it right. We have to get it right. And we have to understand that when we're bringing recommendations, concerns on behalf of our residents, then it's got to be dealt with in a very professional-like manner. I'm not saying that it hasn't been in all cases, but we need to make marked improvements in that regard. So I want to thank you for the work that you and the committee are doing. I know it's not easy. I know, it's a big responsibility. But we all have a responsibility here. And, you know, the roles and responsibilities that we have as elected representatives has to truly be respected and appreciated 365 days of the year. Thank you.
24 hours a day. Can the deputy just talk? I want to just get the deputies, because she's been waiting here patiently.
Yeah, thank you to the selection committee that council agreed on and was formed. The great thing about the selection committee is that all of us councillors are welcome to attend and observe any of these deliberations, meetings, interviews, and all of the goings-on so that it gives us the knowledge that we need when however many of these candidates do come back for the second set of interviews with all of council. So I would encourage all of us to, you know, anyone that has the time, to attend and observe these meetings. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the other day, but I certainly look forward to sitting in and observing the other meetings of the selection committee as they come forward, so, thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Thanks for that, Deputy. I guess I'll just speak to Counselor Twill's comments first. When KBRS has the individual interviews with all the council, please let them know your thoughts. That's the time where they'll be looking for your input as to what we are doing. Based on the input that we receive from council, from external stakeholders, we'll be creating a candidate profile, what we're looking for. So it's kind of taking the existing job profile that we have, taking council input, taking external stakeholder input, director input, and putting that all into one package. And then they'll come back to us with that, okay? So that's why that piece that you have the time to speak with the individual company, tell them your thoughts, tell them your wishes, tell them what your hopes and aspirations are. I do want to comment to the other deputy. And as we go forward, the meetings will be with the selection committee. We did ask that question of KBRS and they were very clear. They said they've never done, they've been in the business for 50-some years, 25 years in the Atlantic region. And their experience, the way they do it, is to work with the selection committee. So we will inform you of that. We will keep you up to date in terms of what's going on. But that's the kind of the approach that will be taken with it. So the committee will be doing the work in collaboration. We'll bring back our recommendations, we'll keep everyone up to date as we move along in the process.
Mr. MacLeer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. My only comment on, you know, on the numbers, if it's, obviously, I think everybody's expecting more than one. But I would think with the criteria and what the firm is going to recommend that, you know, and if there's 10 applications and if it's three or five, if, you know, they could shortlist it to, you know, funnel down. And, you know, and if that's, if there's only three, so be it. But if there's five good ones that all meet the criteria, you know, that's even better. So if it's something greater than one and between one and five, and they all, you know, meet the criteria, so that could be three, four, or five, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it meets the alme criteria, so, thank you.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what Counselor Beck had just said, because KBRS, and they would work with the selection committee, and that's why they would continue to. But I think elected officials can observe. They can go in the meeting and observe. They can't speak, they can't say anything without the chair's permission, so. But they should be able to go in and observe. We are in every other committee. And I think that, you know, obviously, some people want to go in and observe what's going on. I think that option should be there. Like you say, the committee still does the work. The consultants still work with the members on the committee. But that option should be there to go in and observe. So I think I understood what you were saying was that wasn't going to be the case because the consultant has only worked with the selection committee. They will continue to work with the selection committee. But I think if I want to come in and observe a meeting, I should be able to. We are every other, every understanding committee meeting.
This is not, this is not a standing, this is a selection committee. A standing committee allows for any councillor to come in and participate, whether they sit passively or may ask the chair to participate. I went through the Roy Main selection. There was a selection committee set. Remember, you were there, Counselor Twill was there, we brought in the candidates. So the selection committee didn't have anyone coming from outside. It was the selection committee that, I think Counselor Beck is doing a very good job along with the other committee members to be very open, transparent, and accountable.
Oh, you know, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I, Counselor Beck's doing an excellent job, we're getting their feedback and so on. But I do think that this is the one hire that every elected official is responsible for. And I think if an elected official wants the city and see how it's going, he has that right.
Counselor Duron made a good point, you know. Is it minimum two? If we have five good candidates, those five good candidates will be coming into this chamber to speak to us. And that's probably what they're going to zero down to or bring it down to KBRS by the time we get through the process that they go through. Do you want to add anything to that, Counselor Beck?
No, nothing, nothing, nothing more than what I've already said.
Okay, I have on the final part, and this is, I think this is historic. It's 6:55, we're down to new business. Yes, thank you very much for Sue. Sue and her job as interim CAO. Any new business?
And it's something I meant to say earlier, Worship, but I forgot. I will say I did talk to the manager of Parks and Rec earlier about this, but just like to get this clarified, maybe Sue will be, end up being the one doing it. So was at, I believe it was Bell Alliance Center for the George Traynor Tournament. No heat on. Me acquired about it, told it wasn't working, so on. Anyway, was in for the Ringette Tournament. The heat wasn't on. Now, we have 87% that we pay for that facility. I did talk to, it wasn't the manager, now, it was, I assume it was the manager. Anyway, very good, turned the heat on. There's a lot of grandparents and young kids, and they're all watching their grandkids and so on. So I think we put heaters in for a reason, and I think we're having tournaments. And I think that, I was always under the understanding, I know this came up, feels like five years ago, it's probably been longer than that, I know Stewie McFedge was on council at the time, where this had come up before. And we had said that as part of the subsidies, that the heaters would stay on. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified with Bell Alliance Center or not. But they only turn it on for UPI games, is my understanding, and maybe the Charlestown Islanders. But it's the taxpayers who pay for it.
Yeah, 87%.
And head the billing bill and continue. So when you've got a number of parents and grandparents and grandkids and so on, they should be able to watch in comfort. So I'm just asking that the message gets sent to the right people. I told them that someone would get back to them to clarify.
I tried to reach out to management, didn't get through. I do have a call in, so Sue is the CAO. She'll reach out to Alan Wood, who is the, I think, the CEO?
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, and I just want to again, thank you for dropping by, Mayor McKenna. And Stephanie Most, you're welcome anytime, and there's free pop in the fridge.
Mayor McKenna only wanted to say about your selection committee that you can't apply.
You can apply. Okay, so I need a resolution to, oh, sorry, go ahead there.
Thanks, sorry, it was on for a bit. And anyway, just circling back, if we could just get some clarification, even if it's just via email, just circling back to what Counselor Bernard was discussing about whether or not the rest of us elected officials can observe if we choose to. And if that seems to be something that isn't agreeable upon, I just would like to know where it is in our procedural bylaw or in the MGA that says that we as elected officials can't sit and observe. So we can park it for now if we want, but I would like some clarification on that because it was under my, it was under my impression that we were able to observe without participating.
Procedural bylaw or no procedural bylaw, but by convention, the last selection process, the last section, selection committee, this never come up. And I know with Roy Main, I was on council, I was not on the selection committee, but I was here when the interviewing was going on for the candidates that did come and ended up with Roy Main as CAO. So we can look into that, okay? So can I get a resolution, a motion to move into a closed session, as per Section 119, subsection 1? Okay, up the Municipal Government Act. So 119, subsection 1E, matters still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And the two items, contract negotiations, negotiations, agreement. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Bernard, all in favor?
I got a question.
Yeah, you can ask it when we're in the closed session. Okay, what is it?
There's two items.
On this, going into the closed session?
Yeah, there's two items.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, what are the items?
It's right there. Contract negotiations, negotiations and agreement. Because we're going into closed session, you'll get more information. And it was in your package.
Okay, okay. On the, and it's, that's public, right?
No.
Those items?
No, they're not public.
Well, there's one item there, I don't believe we need to go.
We do.
No, with all due respect, there.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
You know what, we had a discussion here last Friday on one of those topics, and it was open, it was done in a public forum. I don't know why, I mean, I don't know why we're going behind closed doors. And furthermore, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, do we not have a contract with this particular company?
Counselor Twill, can I tell you that on Friday, the meeting was an information session? You didn't get into the contract, and if you did, so be it. But this is more detailed. And again, it is in our, in section 119, subsection 1E. It's very, very precise. So when we go into the closed session, can you please bring that up? Thank you.
I don't think we should, anyway.
All those in favor? All those against? Okay, Counselor Twill, yeah. So can I, can we?
Open session on the agenda is a resolution. Can you put it up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's up on the screen. Can you read the resolution?
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Be it resolved that council instructs staff to initiate contract renegotiations to modernize the transit agreement with Trias Transit, the town of Stratford, and the town of Cornwall, and that the mayor and C A L were hereby authorized to execute any standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question?
Question called.
Question's called. Oh, okay, sorry. No, no, I went too fast. Counselor Twill, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counselor Bernard. Counselor Twill, you go first.
Um...
Can you just stand up?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, please, sure. Thank you.
Regarding the discussion that took place in the close door session, there's still many questions. There's still many concerns before we embark upon the process. I'd like a much clearer understanding with our partner, Trias Tours. So, having said that, I move a deferral.
I move a deferral for further discussions, better understanding and understanding what the parameters are, timelines, timeframes. So, that deferral has been moved by myself.
I'll go up and be... Do we have a second here for the deferral? I can't, no. But...
You should be right back.
You should be right back.
Okay. I'll go up if I think there's a second here. Counselor Bernard, your light's on. Is there a second here for the deferral?
I'm waiting to speak.
What?
I'm waiting to speak.
Okay. I know, but yeah, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Bernard. Hold that thought.
Yeah, do you need a second here?
Yes, I am. As long as these conditions are met. Okay, well, then we'll wait for his worship.
There's a motion on the floor to defer?
And I'll second it.
Moved by?
And I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Twill?
And I'll second it.
Second it. Okay, so we speak to the deferral. Anyone on the deferral?
Here.
Anyone, okay, anyone else? Oh, sorry, thank you. Go ahead. Deputy, can you just stand up and please give me your...
Yes, certainly.
You're voting on the deferral.
Yeah, and in terms of the deferral, I would just like to just wait for some of the discussions that we had in closed session in terms of response and just a little bit more clarity before I'm comfortable to vote on this. So, I would be here tonight to support the resolution, to defer, and I hope that the other counselors will give us that opportunity just for a little bit more information. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, worship. I would, I would agree with the deferral, and I don't know, we talked about it over an hour. I don't know what more we can talk about, to be honest with you. I think at some point, the contract has to be massaged, negotiated, whatever. So, I think that, you know, yes, you go ahead and negotiate. But I know this is just on deferral right now. So, to me, it's, you gotta have, you gotta have that conversation between our partner, T3, and our staff. So, go out, see what the, see what their partner's saying, see what their staff's saying. At the end of the day, I still want it to continue to be an entrepreneurial system, and I want any decisions to come back here to council to decide on before any decisions are made.
Counselor Beck?
Just please stand there, sir.
I think Counselor McKinnon was...
No, you're, you're clear. You're clear.
Yeah, I think we get on with business here. I'm not going to support the motion to defer. I think the questions about further information will be illuminated as we get down to the, as we get down the road. Some of the phases can be done early on. The questions that I think the deputy are looking for can come in due time. And I think, as was stated earlier, no ratification, or the whole discussions could not be completed without that anyway. So, that will come in due time. I'd say get the process going, and we'll get moving along with it.
So, we still can use the system. It's now open.
Is...
Yeah, no, you can do it. Yeah, yeah.
That's...
So, it's on the deferral. That was moved, that was moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. So, the deferral, good. Can we close? Close. And no against the deferral, seven-two. So, the deferral doesn't carry. Seven-two. And I'll just... And D M. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we accept that. And we move back. So, is there a question to put the main motion on the floor?
Question called.
Question's called, okay. Hold on.
Did the motion you made?
Yes, it did.
And it's to the resolution?
Yes, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment.
To the resolution?
Yes.
Well, that's up to the mover and the second. The mover and the second is...
I'd like to move, I'd like to move an amendment.
Yep, it's up to the mover and the second to accept. So, it's Counselor McKinnon, do you accept the...
Anyone, okay, anyone else? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Go ahead. Deputy, can you just stand up and please give me your...
Yes, certainly.
You're voting on the deferral.
Yeah. And in terms of the deferral, I would just like to just wait for some of the discussions that we had in closed session in terms of response and just a little bit more clarity before I'm comfortable to vote on this. So, I would be here tonight to support the resolution to defer, and I hope that the other counselors will give us that opportunity just for a little bit more information. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would agree with the deferral, and I don't know. We talked about it over an hour. I don't know what more we can talk about, to be honest with you. I think at some point, the contract has to be massaged, negotiated, whatever. So, I think that, you know, yes, you go ahead and negotiate. But I know this is just on deferral right now. So, to me, you've got to have that conversation between our partner, T3, and our staff. So, we'll see what their partner's saying, see what their staff's saying. At the end of the day, I still want it to continue to be an entrepreneurial system, and I want any decisions to come back here to council to decide on before any decisions are made.
Counselor Beck?
Just please stand there, sir.
I think Counselor McKinnon was...
No, you're clear. You're clear.
Yeah, I think we get on with business here. I'm not going to support the motion to defer. I think the questions about further information will be illuminated as we go down the road. Some of the phases can be done early on. The questions that I think the deputy are looking for can come in due time. And I think, as was stated earlier, no ratification or the whole discussions could not be completed without that anyway. So, that will come in due time. I'd say get the process going, and we'll get moving along with it.
So, we still can use the system. It's now open. It's...
Is that everyone's...
Yeah, no, you can do it. Yeah. Yeah.
That's true.
So, it's on the deferral. That was moved...
On the deferral.
That was moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankop. So, the deferral. Good. Can we close? Close. And no against the deferral, seven two. So, the deferral doesn't carry. Seven two. Counselor Twill. And DM. Okay. Okay, so we accept that, and we move back. So, is there a question to put the main motion on the floor?
Question called.
Question's called. Okay, hold on.
Did the motion you made?
Yes, it did. Yes, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment.
To the resolution?
Yes.
Well, that's up to the mover and the second. The mover and the second is...
I'd like to move an amendment.
Yep, it's up to the mover and the second to accept. So, it's Counselor McKinnon, do you accept the...
I think we should move on.
Counselor Beck?
No.
So, they don't agree, can't move to the amendment.
Can't make an amendment?
Nope. It has to be moved...
In terms of the spirit of partnership?
It has to be approved by the...
Partnership with our T3 transit partner?
Yeah. Counselor Twill, we're going to vote. Just one sec. Hold on.
This is where the...
This is to vote on the resolution to initiate renegotiations to modernize the transit agreement with Trias Transit, the town of Stratford, and the town of Cornwall. All in?
All in, Your Worship.
Yeah. I know, the resolution was called. Question was called. Question was called.
We don't know what to add, sir.
Question, nine parameters. They're in the background.
It's in public court now?
Yeah. No, 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 no. Okay, you have to vote. Did you vote? Questions have been called. Okay, can you put it up?
John McClure didn't vote. No.
He left to just...
Are you yea or nay for the...
Yes.
Yes. So, it's seven two to go, and Twill and... Okay, Counselor Twill. Okay, that's it.
So, once again, the parameters are not made public, right?
Nope. Counselor Twill?
It's not in the report.
Okay, we need a...
And is that, those parameters, are they consistent with what a true partnership is?
That I don't know.
You don't know?
Okay.
Nobody knows.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Matarik, seconded by Counselor Beck. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.